Signed on. You're live.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to our Zoning Board of Appeals. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This will be the May meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for City of Middletown. I'd like to move along and take care of attendance. Wendy Rodriguez here. Mark Woody absent. Mary Ann Cavallaro here. Myself, Jim Burdis here. And Keith Hollick here. So one member missing. All right.
You do have the building here, Mr. Welsh.
Mr. Welsh here and our counsel, Rich Krogan. All right. So we'd like to let anyone know that is here to speak about 40 Adams. That topic has been moved to next month's agenda at the applicant's request. So if you're here to speak for 40 Adams, you get to go home early if you like. We'll go ahead and move along in the agenda to our topic for tonight. The applicant for Orange Terrace. We're going to continue with public comment for people who have new information to offer.
Before we do that, would the applicant, being that one member is missing, if you don't feel comfortable pursuing it tonight?
Well, we'd like to finish our presentation and ask whatever questions they have to close the public hearing. That's what we'd like to do.
Please speak into the microphone.
Over there, sir.
Sorry, sorry. What we'd like to-
Just state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Neil D. Frishberg. I'm from Fabricant Lippman in Frishberg. And together with Phil Dropkin, we represent the applicant. Good evening. We had done a fairly extensive presentation to the entire board at the last meeting. So we'd like to answer any questions the public might have or anybody else may have. We'd like to have the public hearing closed today. That's what we'd like to accomplish. As to a vote being taken, my thinking is that I think I'd like a full board to render a decision, if that's acceptable, to the chair and to the ZBA.
Well, you can certainly proceed tonight. And if the board deems that enough information has been gathered from the public, they can close the public hearing tonight as well. If you would like to hold off having a vote because you think that it may be unfair to your client, we can certainly do that. There's no guarantee that at the next meeting we would have a quorum or that Mr. Woody would be present at the next meeting. So I would say at the very least that the next meeting, if there is a quorum here, that we would have to have a vote.
Okay.
Once the public hearing is closed, we only have 62 days to make a decision.
I understand. I understand.
Thank you. So continue. All right. We'll continue.
Would the applicant like to go first and present any additional information you have?
Just please state your name for the record and your business affiliation.
Yes. My name's Alfred A. Fusco, Jr. I'm a professional engineer with Fusco Engineering and Land Surveying in 233 East Main Street in Middletown. I reside at 19 Way Way Uplane in Port Jervis, New York. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Counselor, and members of the board to allow us to do a presentation. I appreciate your time and effort. I apologize for not making the last meeting. I hear my representative did fairly well, so, you know, but he's got another meeting tonight. But first of all, what we're here for is a narrative in relationship to some of the issues that had come up that I was told are appropriate in this instance. That it was related to me that there was questions about mitigating water flow, you know, turnaround and things of that nature. So I have a little narrative to go over with you is that, you know, water does flow off of Mountain Avenue, down the mountain, you know, onto the Orange Terrace, specifically onto this project, as well as everybody else's lots there. I'm very familiar with it because I lived at 94 Mountain Road, Mountain Avenue, rather, for 25 years. So I'm very familiar with the properties. And each of these properties is contiguous and facing Hillside Cemetery. So it's on a dead end. The way the topography is set up on the hill is that the topography floors flows towards Hillside Cemetery and not towards any of the other houses. However, to mitigate any impact of the water runoff coming down from the mountain, we proposed that we would put in a retaining wall that would have drainage behind it to then be absorbed through piping in the crushed stone. The pipe would come out of the retaining wall in a couple places and go into a bio-retention ditch. That bio-retention ditch would be utilized in order to have the water go back into the ground. It's what it's arranged for. The DEC recommends it. It's very similar to a rain garden. We're also going to take the runoff from the homes, from the gutters and leaders, and put them into a rain garden or a dry well, whichever is closest and most appropriate. So we're taking the water that's coming down the hill and collecting it and putting it back into the ground. Now, there is a certain amount of water that obviously is going to flow off of the new proposed road. However, the new proposed road on the dead end slopes away from the existing road. It's quite a difference of about eight, 10 feet that it would flow towards Hillside Cemetery. It could possibly go towards Clinton Street a little bit, but the way we're directing it, we're going to direct it to sheet flow away from any properties other than Hillside Cemetery. Now, one of the things that we did see is that this should take care of most of the drainage. We did also see that there were some puddles in the existing roadway that really there was no way that we could accommodate getting rid of those couple of puddles in front of the existing homes. It might be able to be handled the next time the road is repaved, but at this point, it's really nothing we could do because our property slopes in the exact opposite direction. You know, one of the things that I think we're also looking at is that I heard that there was an issue in relationship to, you know, parking and cars and this and that and the other. One of the things we had accommodated was that there would be two cars for each unit, each home. And we've allowed the driveway to be, you know, large enough to accommodate those two vehicles. But in addition to that, I don't imagine there'd be much more traffic rather than, you know, the 12 cars a day coming in and out of that area. We did look at the turnaround and we had a email back from the fire inspector or fire chief, whatever they referred to him in the email, and they had agreed to the turnaround we had. And so had the Commissioner of Public Works. We also had discussed with Commissioner of Public Works the nature of the utilities in the roadway, and he had agreed with everything that we had submitted in relationship to the water, sewer, and the roadway. And he had signed off on that.
And that would all be on a site plan?
That would be on a site plan. That's correct. That's correct. And one of the things that we had also, you know, obviously, you know, looked at was the, to try to reduce the amount of impact wherever we could. And that's why we put in the bio-retention, take the drainage away, have a nice turnaround that the, not just the fire trucks could use, but also the plow trucks, garbage trucks, whatever's necessary, or even the public. Somebody drives in, it's a dead end, they need to turn around. So we believe we accommodated that. One of the things is, is I don't know that-
What was the turnaround?
Excuse me?
What is the turnaround? Is it a T?
It's a, it's similar to a T. It's more of an L. Yeah. It's more of an L. One of the things that we did is we added to it because on the dead end, there was enough room for it. So we made a turnaround that was, I believe, 40 by 60 feet, if I'm not mistaken. One of the things that I think that I wanted to make note of is that I am so very familiar with the city of Middletown. I was Commissioner of Public Works for 25 years. I worked here for 33 years. So, and there's a lot of 50-foot lots and undersized lots even below that. And I don't know that that would necessarily impact a neighborhood by the addition of a few houses on the dead end. So that's just something I wanted to throw out in relationship to, I know what the function is of the ZBA, and you have to look at that and accommodate that to make sure that it does not have a negative impact on the neighborhood. I very often represent 12 municipalities, and I'm on the other side of the fence with you guys. And I look at it and I understand what's required, and I believe that this would not have an adverse impact. But I'm available for any questions anyone might have.
Were you consulted when the applicant initially bought the property? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was not. I picked up the job after a surveyor attempted to move on the project, didn't have time, and he asked me if I could help out, so.
The reason I was asking was if you would have advised the applicant at the time they were purchasing that the lots had to be 75 foot in width?
I was not involved at that point in time.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I don't know if the board has any other questions for Mr. Fusco. I don't. No.
I do.
Go ahead.
My concern for the-
Just speak into the mic.
My concern regarding the cemetery.
Right.
I did hear you say at the end when we talked about it.
It will.
And its status as a historical site.
Mary Ann, your mic isn't on. There you go.
Oh, it's on now.
Thank you.
I put it the wrong way. Sorry.
Yes.
My concern is about any destruction at all to the cemetery.
It would not because it's in a, where it's going is an existing wetland, and the cemetery cannot use it. There's a pond back there and whatnot, and the cemetery cannot use it. I'm very familiar with that cemetery, and I-
Can I ask you if it could spread into the cemetery? I mean, we all know that water can find its way along.
Well, no. It would just be into the existing wetland. It wouldn't go beyond that. And the amount of runoff is minimal. It's just what it would be for the actual blacktop because we're collecting all the water that comes down mountain, off Mountain Avenue now. We're collecting that and putting it back into the ground. That water now all goes down there. So if we were to do nothing, the water would be going down there more than there would be after the project.
My other concern was the turnaround.
Yes.
And the necessity for the larger vehicles for our help, not mine as living there, but any of our help. If there's an emergency and we have a fire truck and an ambulance, and of course, all the people who are coming to help the people who are in trouble, there was a mention of backing out of the road, and I just find that frightening. Also, in those houses, even if it's one or two cars that they have now, Grandma and Grandpa always come to visit. They stay for a week or two. I'm not sure, based on what I understood from the numbers, that the road is safe enough for all of that with the addition of the new houses. That was a concern of mine as well that you addressed. You said the turnaround is 40 by 60. What is the road exactly? Is it 20, 30? Or I saw all kinds of numbers for the road.
The actual, the roadway is 50 feet, but the actual pavement is 24.
24.
What we did is we tried to minimize the amount of runoff. You know, we could make it 30 if, but Commissioner Toewill approved it at 24. Now, looking at the, you know, there's a lot of dead ends and cul-de-sacs and whatnot in Middletown, very many of them. And I don't disagree with you that public safety is primary in every event. All right? Now, one of the things that would happen, and I can't tell you that there isn't going to be a fire truck backing out at some point, because they send three fire trucks to every event.
Right.
Three fire trucks go, you know, fire chief, firemen, you know.
These officers, ambulances.
So it'll be jammed with vehicles.
Right.
Now, some of them will have to back out. But that being said, that happens almost in every situation because even if you have a street that goes through, the first fire truck stops, the second one stops, third one stops, all the cars pile in back of them or around them, and nobody turns around anyway. I can verify that to you because as Commissioner of Public Works, I ran the seven fire companies. I went to every second call. And so, you know, I can verify that there's a lot of backing up. Irregardless, if you were on North Street or Wickham Avenue, there's a lot of backing up, no matter what they do. There's no avoiding it.
I was concerned about the number of cars in the driveways as well because the kids play in the street, as we know. We all did it. And I'd be concerned about the extra traffic as well.
Well, you know, there's always a consideration for traffic. I mean, there's, the number of houses up there are, you know, there's, in that area, there's 200 or 300 houses. You know, another six homes and 12 cars, I don't think it's going to adversely impact the traffic.
Okay. Thank you.
You're more than welcome. Anyone else?
Do any other board members have questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, counsel. My name is Phil Dropkin. I'm here with Neil Frishberg. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you again. I made a presentation on April 19th. I sent you a subsequent letter on May 10th. Have a brief presentation now, but I do want to, I made an error in the April 19th memo in regard to the Cortland case, and I don't want it to go unspoken. The Cortland case, the lower court felt that, well, the lower court did overturn the decision of the planning board to deny the variance. The appellate court, which I did not see that case when I prepared the document, reversed the lower court and felt that there was substantial evidence to support the decision of the planning board, and it didn't, and it deferred to the expertise of the planning board. So to that extent, I just wish to make that clear, that that was an error on my part.
We will put your May 10th letter and make that part of the record as well.
Thank you. What I endeavored to do in the May 10th letter was to answer some of the questions that had come up, and I think Mr. Fusco helped to complement my understanding of the situation. The requested area variance seeks permission for the construction of three single-family homes above what the zoning code permits in a location that is uniquely situated in the neighborhood because it's at the end of a cul-de-sac, and it is surrounded by 52 acres of fields and woods constituting the Hillside Cemetery. The lots, although 50 feet in width at road frontage, which is less than the 75-foot width contemplated under the code, is consistent with the character of the community and will not produce an undesirable change in the community, within the community. And I, in my May 10th letter, I provided you with a copy of the map. I meant to bring it again tonight. I walked out of the office for that, and so I apologize for that, too. Anyhow. Within the community, there are 120 lots of 50-foot frontage width, of which 88 have principally one or two family homes. Or said otherwise, the built 50-foot frontage constitutes 73% of the 50-foot wide available lots, and the 88 building, built lots on 50-foot frontage width constitute approximately 55% of all of the lots in the neighborhood. I counted, I used the tax map. I counted, I did the best I could to be accurate. I'm off a little bit. I'm off a little bit, but I did count several times. Given the project's unique location within the neighborhood, there are no other parcels like it, and so no precedent will be established by granting the variance. This, in effect, is one-of-a-kind situation. The proposed variance has a de minimis impact on the neighborhood. There are 88 single-family homes with frontage of 50 feet or less. The proposed six additional homes increase this to 94 homes, assuming the variance is granted. The three additional homes that the applicant seeks would be less than 3.2% of the single-family neighborhood homes with frontage width of 50 feet or less. That's three over 94. Comes out to 3.2%. Of the total number of lots in the neighborhood, which is approximately 160, 170, 175 perhaps, the three additional improved lots, if a variance is granted, would constitute less than 2%, and I did that three over 160. If the project is viewed in the totality of the circumstances, including number one, that the project lots are consistent with the majority of the existing lots within the neighborhood, number two, the minimal number of lots that are involved in the project, meaning six, number three, the unique location of the project's lots, meaning at the cul-de-sac surrounded by the cemetery properties, four, that there is not anticipated to be any adverse physical or environmental impacts to the neighborhood, five, that there is no feasible alternative for the applicant other than to build the six proposed homes on the six lots in order to just about break even. The applicant's project, in looking at those five factors, the applicant's project can rationally be determined to be not substantial, and the balancing of the statutory five-factor test weighs in favor of granting the variance. There's a recent case that came out just on April 23rd of this year. I have a copy for you, counsel, if you-
Sure.
-like it. It's, it does spend an extensive amount of time speaking to the issue of what do we mean by substantial? And what I did to try to make your life a little bit easier is attach to this memo, I excerpted all of the cases that they cited discussing substantiality. But I also have the entire opinion with me for you, which is quite lengthy.
Okay. I would appreciate it.
Sure. In support of the foregoing, I am referencing the matter of Citizens United to protect our neighborhood Hillcrest versus the town of Ramapo. I have an internal site, which I will provide you with. There, the applicant sought to use, sought use and area variances to construct 10 dwelling units and five accessory apartments, which variances were granted by the ZBA. The petitioners brought an Article 78 action to set aside the ZBA's grant of the variances. The court noted at page 44 to the, that as to the area variances, petitioners alleged that the percentage deviation from the purported applicable bulk requirements show that the variances are substantial. The court, after undertaking a detailed analysis of the relevant case law and treatises, and I have an attachment, attachment one, concluded that the correct approach to assess the substantial impact or effects of our project was, quote, "to view the totality of the circumstances and the overall effect," meaning the effect on the neighborhood, "of granting the relief." The court cases cited in the attachment one to my memo more specifically stand for the propositions that a deviation from the code standard, whether it's for the height of a radio antenna or a departure from the permitted number of parking spaces, or an increase in the permitted size of a structure above the code standard, quote, "could not be gauged in the abstract," end quote. And even if the deviation is substantial, it, quote, "only becomes relevant if it relates to an adverse effect in the neighborhood." And they were citing a previous case, Klein House versus a ZBA. It's all, I've got the citations for you.
Can I just stop you for one minute? What would you say to the people in the neighborhood that had to increase their lot size to comply with the 75 feet?
Well, you know-
You heard testimony from a couple of people.
I did. I did hear that. And what I say to that is that those folks, as you or I in our particular municipalities, there's a ZBA for a reason. ZBA offers an opportunity to add flexibility to the code under different circumstances, unique circumstances. So it's, I did hear very often that it's not fair, it's not right, I had to comply. Everyone had an opportunity, does have an opportunity, to come before this board to seek relief from the standards that are set out in the code.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you.
You, at any time. The Citizens United Court went on to note that where building volume exceeded the code limit, that, quote, "the underlying circumstances minimize the impact of the magnitude of the variance," which in that case was a 45% increase, specifically relying on the fact that 66% of the properties in the subdivision did not comply with the requirement. That was the Raub Vogel v. ZBA of the village of Brookville case citation will, and the materials will be provided to you. And the Citizens United Court, in discussing approvingly Sexton v. ZBA of the, versus the town of, the ZBA of the town of Oyster Bay, noted that where a variance is substantial, quote, "this does weigh against the petitioner. However, viewing the totality of the circumstances and considering the other applicable variance criteria, the court finds this matter standing alone is insufficient as a matter of law to deny the variance." On another matter, and in addressing the need for a rational basis for a board decision and community opposition to the project, quote, "a determination of a board will not be deemed rational if it rests entirely on subjective considerations such as general community opposition and lacks objective factual basis." That's the CAC- That's the Caxia case v. City of White Plains. It was an appellate division decision. The court also noted that, quote, "courts may set aside a zoning board determination where the record reveals that the board acted illegally or arbitrarily or abused its discretion or merely succumbed to general community pressure." Finally, while noted previously in my presentations to this board, it's worthy of note because of the similarity to the matter at hand. The appellate court affirmed in the Cristal Pond Homes versus Pryor case that a lower court's reversal of the zoning board denial of a variance, noting that, quote, "52 of 100 homes in the immediate area were on substandard lots and that the proposed area variance would have no impact on the adjoining properties. There is no evidence in the record that the granting of the variance would have an undesirable effect on the character of the neighborhood, adversely impact on physical and environmental conditions, or otherwise result in a detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or the community." Similarly, in the Ifra v. Uchig case, this was also an appellate decision, the appellate court upheld the lower court in reversing a denial of the ZBA of the town of Harrison. In this case, the applicant sought to subdivide an already substandard lot and to make two substandard lots. The petitioner showed that within 500 feet of the subject lot, 33 of 39 lots were substandard. The court determined that the evidence would not support a finding of substantial impact, and therefore, the ZBA abused its discretion. That's the end of my presentation. I have the, these materials for you together, and for each of you as well. I've brought enough.
Sure. Can I come up and grab them?
Sure. And let me get the case for you. Do you have the case?
I do, yeah. Do you want to add about the spreadsheet?
Which one?
You want to talk about the spreadsheet? You want me to talk about that?
You can talk about the spreadsheet. I would like to add one other thing.
It's cherry eyes press. It's actually a pretty good decision.
I'll take a look.
It's well thought.
Now, did you have ones for the board?
I do, I do.
They only gave you the case, though.
Okay. That's fine.
You're the attorney.
Four, that's four enough. Five, let me give you five.
Thank you. And it will be made part of the record as well.
Their packet include the spreadsheet?
Thank you.
Their packet did not include the spreadsheet because they got that previously.
They did.
I just, I guess I should mention that Terry Rice, who's a recognized authority on zoning issues, town, town issues, in a survey of New York law zoning and land use, he writes that "one of the most critical aspects of an area, of an area variance application is the effect of the proposed development on the character of a neighborhood. As a result, an applicant seeking variances to undertake development which conforms to the prevailing substandard character of an area possesses an exceptionally compelling case for the granting of relief." He goes on to say, as to substantiality, "common sense must prevail, and the percentage variation from the legislative bulk requirements should not be considered in the abstract. The actual circumstances and the effect of a requested variance and its effect on the community should be considered rather than myopic reliance on bold statistics." That's his opinion. He is a recognized authority, and I hope you will take that into consideration.
And just for the record, it's by percentage-wise, four lots are seeking a 33%, and two lots are at 41% variance.
That's probably correct.
Thank you.
The four lots, yes. You're talking about the 50-foot lots?
Yes.
Yes, yes. And the other two lots are 44 feet-
Yes.
...width at the, at the frontage.
Yes.
Yes.
Anything else, counselor?
That's it for me right now.
Thank you.
I think- Thank you. We're somewhat tag-teaming on this, but thank you for your indulgence. So one of the issues that you should consider is whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. And so what I tried to do is I, we handed out a spreadsheet earlier to show you in dollars and cents, that the applicant can only break even, pretty much break even, if he has six lots. If he does five lots, he's out about $140,000. If he has four lots, he's out $302,000. And if he has three lots, he's out $464,400. I think that's an issue, that's a factor that, it's not dispositive, and I get it, that, you know, the good people of Middletown would say, well, he took a risk. Right? He took a risk. So that's the risk he took. So why should we bail him out? But as my colleague pointed out, that's the purpose of the ordinance permitting a variance. And that's, and that's one of the factors the court should consider.
Neil, your client proceeded with a four-lot subdivision. They went to the planning board for a recommendation. The planning board, which I was there for, did not recommend, but that did not end the application. You went to the common council, just without a planning board recommendation, you could proceed with the application, but the application was withdrawn. So you did present a four-lot subdivision, but never completed the process on it.
That's true. That's why we withdrew it, because that's why we came here, because really what we need is a six-lot subdivision.
But at one point, you believed a four-lot was feasible.
Well, I wasn't involved in that, and I suppose people intended natural consequences of their actions, so I could understand, that's a fair inference, that my client believed that four lots would, would be helpful to him. But I can tell you, when I sat down with him and crunched the numbers with him, they came out to, to a negative number. And a lot of the numbers, you know, when he initially started this project-
Just hold on one second. Just a moment. Thank you. Can you get through? Sorry.
That's all right. I was just waiting. When he started this project, the costs were X, and now they're X plus 30%. So, yes, when he started the project, it could have been four lots, but then everything went up about 30%, according to him. And that is not, that's, that's not a self-created hardship. He wasn't, he's not responsible for supply chain problems, inflation, et cetera.
Eventually, maybe the market corrects itself as well.
Yeah, perhaps, but the question becomes when, if. None of us know what the Federal Reserve's going to do, none of us, that's above my pay grade, candidly.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. And the spreadsheet is part of the record?
Yeah, I believe so. I brought extra copies.
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
Very briefly, I'm not going to read it. In my May 10th letter, I do go into, which I did get from the internet, so take it for what it's worth, what the Construction Association, Construction Financial Management Association, what their raw material increases have been since December 2021 to the current period. And they've been in the order of 30, 35%. So that's the, it is, corroborates what I found.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Public hearing is still open.
Okay. Does the applicant have any other representatives for us this evening?
No, no, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Moving along, we'd like to continue along with the public hearing. Are there any members of the public here to speak?
And just if you can bring new evidence. Okay. Is that for each board member?
Yes, 10 copies. My name is Maria Jetzumlong. I live at 2 Clinton Street, Middletown, New York. I'm not going to go through the entire packet because a lot of it is repetitive, but I'm gonna, if you turn to page 2, number 5, at the last meeting, you asked, how many homes are on Orange Terrace? And there are 29 homes on Orange Terrace. And out of the 29 homes, there are only three homes that do not comply with the zoning code. One was built in 1950, the other one, 1989, and the last one was built in 2019, and they're right next to each other. So I guess, I guess that's why it was allowed to build that house right smack in the middle between 1950 and 1989.
Yeah, the code allows, if it's a substandard lot built between two substandard lots-
Yes, and I understand that.
...that are existing lots, that you can-
Yes, I understand that. So the rest of the 26 homes, which include the end of West Conklin and the beginning of State Street, those are all in compliance with the zoning code as well, as recently as the two homes that were just built on State Street on 75 by 100-foot lots, they're following the zoning code. The attorney mentioned that when you asked the question about how is it with the people who wanted to follow and obey the zoning code, well, some of us did appear in front of the zoning board and were denied. We didn't have money to hire an attorney, so I don't know if that would have made a difference or not. And Exhibit 8, you do have a courtesy copy of the map, and I labeled it all out, it's all written there, the size of the lot and the year the home was built. You talk about how traffic is going to be minimal. I have already counted 13 vehicles and 10 children that play in the streets, and they're in a dead end, and they do not pay attention to cars. So if you add six more homes, that's more children in the street, more kids who are not going to be paying attention to traffic and potentially get hurt. You have, I constantly have to honk the horn at them so they can move, because they figure they're on a dead-end street, they don't have to move. Going back to the character of the community, with 26 homes in compliance with the zoning code, and you add six more homes on a 50-foot lot, that does not continue with the character of the community. It might be behind us or the other lots, but it's not consistent with how Orange Terrace is set up, and the way part of West Conklin is set up, and the, and State Street, and even Clinton Street. We all had to comply, and we all are in the same character of the community. They keep stressing that community. Orange Terrace, that's the community. And they are all on 75-foot lots, if not bigger, with the exception of three homes. Regarding the water flow, I live below street level, and I know that when I, when I had my house built. And the city was kind enough, and Miguel was kind enough at the time, that he had berms installed, so the water won't be running off into my yard. And between the plow and garbage trucks, they've all been diminished. I barely have anything, and when they repaved the road, it wasn't fixed. So now all that water is coming down into my house and my yard. I'm walking on wetlands. At the end of the day, it's all about dollars here, because at one point, four homes was good enough. Now you want to go back to six homes. This developer is not going to live in our community. He's not going to deal with overcrowdedness. He's not going to deal with the rowdy neighbors, or who knows who's going to be moving into this neighborhood? They, all they want to do is get their money in their pocket, and that's my honest opinion, and I'm sure the rest of everybody else is going to say the same thing. We're not saying don't build, build, but follow the code. You can build three homes in those six lots. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's continue the public comment.
Did she state her name for the record?
She's getting her name. Ma'am, could you just state your name for the record, please?
And your address.
Oh, I did. It's Maria Jetzumlong, 2 Clinton Street, Middletown, New York.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Name is Pete Broker. I live on Orange Terrace. Lived there most of my life.
What number on Orange Terrace?
I live on 27.
Thank you.
Actually, it's 2725, because when I built the place, I had to combine the properties. And I did that back in 75. I was told then, building on 50-foot lots is just a no-no. So I had to subdivide, and I built on a 100-foot lot. Ever since then, local builder, Jack Stack, back in 91, he was denied. He wanted to build three homes on 50-foot lots. Rita Tomasovich, she was denied in 2010. She wanted to build a house in five Orange Terrace, which I believe was a 44-foot lot or something like that. This thing here is growing whiskers. We've been on this now for a year or better.
Well, just to correct that, they went to the zone, to the planning board, then it went to the common council, and now it's been before us. It hasn't been before the ZBA for a year.
We had a meeting with Commissioner Jacobs on 4/20/22 at the site. So here we are, 5/17, but we're not addressing the real problem here. We need to build on 75-foot lots. You can't put these homes on 44-foot lots and 50-foot lots. That's what they want to do, is they want to build six homes. It's like, I might as well just live next to condos. It's going to change the whole neighborhood. And if you approve this, you also need to consider what's going to happen on Clinton Street.
Well, every property is unique, so we can only consider the property that's before us.
If you provide, if you let this builder build on 40 lots and 40-foot lots and 50-foot lots, how are you going to deny the next guy that comes along?
They would have to go through the same test that the applicant's going through.
Yeah, well, then the same thing is going to happen. It's really going to change that neighborhood. You know, Orange Terrace has 25, 30 building lots, and only- You know, Orange Terrace has 25, 30 building lots, and only three homes are built on 50-foot lots. You know? It's just, it wouldn't be good for the neighborhood and not good for the city. I've been up here several times. I hope somebody puts a stop to this thing pretty soon. Thanks for listening.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Louis Villefein, 19 Orange Terrace, and I'll make it brief. It's, it's nice when they come up here and says they'll have no adverse effects to the neighborhood, okay? They bring the entire neighborhood. I don't live on West Conklin, all the way down there. I don't live on State Street. I live on Orange Terrace, okay? And it's nice that it's not going to impact the neighborhood. You will impact 19 Orange Terrace. There's 26 homes there that are built on the 75 or more, and three on 50-foot lots. So please don't come over here and bring the rest of the entire, you might as well bring the entire city if you want to make your case any better. Just bring Orange Terrace. It's a nice neighborhood. Right now, I might be contemplating moving because, as it is, I have all these kids in front of my house. And as much as I love kids, including two of my, my, my grandkids too, but that's a lot of kids, right, as it is. Now, you're going to bring six houses, possibly a lot more kids? That's, come on. Consider, you know, the impact on us, on Orange Terrace. Don't bring the rest of the neighborhood all around the, all around the area and try to sweeten your case for this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public for public comment? Okay.
We'll note that we did get a letter.
Yeah, we have two, two pieces of correspondence. Alderman Kleiner, I'll defer to you for the moment.
Thank you. Just Jerry Kleiner, 13 Randall Heights. And listening to the conversation, and Counselor Krogan asked, my question I was going to ask was what happened to the original proposal? The, I guess it was for the four houses, three 75-foot lots, and that was done in consultation. My understanding is that was done in consultation with the planning board and with the commissioner and with the applicant. And that was supposedly an amicable agreement about what would be okay, and then they withdrew it and went back to the request for the six houses on 50-foot lots, which we technically don't allow in the city. So I know supply chain, I know inflation, I know costs went up, but I also believe that the retail sales price of a home and a lot would go up too. Now, that may depend more on the prime rate than supplies do, but I would still think that the value of the homes that you're building would go up. So I, I'm not sure where the numbers come from in terms of what the applicant would lose if he wasn't granted the variance, but I'm not buying it at face value. I also would like to ask, just put in my two cents about keeping the public hearing open, because you could still have the public hearing next time, close it and, and do a vote. I don't think keeping it open would preclude that, but there was a lot of new case history and case law and a lot of new evidence presented tonight that I don't know that neighbors or people there expected. So I just think it should be kept open, but, open, but that's up to you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to move along and read two pieces of correspondence that we received. First piece of correspondence came in electronically on April 18 of 2023. "Mr. Chairman, please note for the record my continued opposition to the application for an area variance related to a six-lot subdivision proposed on Orange Terrace. I concur with the concerns brought forth by many neighbors at previous meetings. Respectfully signed, Joe DiStefano, Mayor." We have another piece of correspondence that came in on May 16 from Jason Lichtenstein to Richard McCormick, which then forward to the board. I'll go ahead and read it. "Please accept this letter as my statement in opposition to the proposed building project on Orange Terrace. For the past few months, a financial group, Orange Terrace LLC, has proposed building six new houses on lots 3 through 13, Orange Terrace, Middletown, New York. I've spoken once at a common council meeting and once at a zoning board meeting. Both times, my statements were consistent with the concerns of my neighbors who currently live within the neighborhood of the proposed project. While we are not looking to tell people they cannot build new houses in our neighborhood, we are asking that any new construction follows the same rules that we were held to as we built our homes. The new project managers are looking for a variance which would allow them to alter the current regulations, which states all houses in our neighborhood need to be built on 75 feet of road front. This specific issue was backed in a common council meeting on September 11, 1991, when Jack Stack of Slate Hill requested the same variance and was denied. The properties which Mr. Stack sought the variance were for 21-15, Orange Terrace. Each property came with 50 feet of road frontage, which would have given him 200 feet in total. This would not work for the proposed three houses he sought to build. Mr. Stack was informed that he was permitted two houses. On those properties currently sit two homes. 19-21 is owned by the Villefein family, 15-17 by the Gill family. Each house sits on 100 feet of road front. We hope that this is seen as past precedent needed to keep this project with the status quo. We understand that the housing market in Middletown is very attractive, and homes are selling at all-time highs. Currently, homes in our neighborhood are going for the prices upwards of $480,000 to $500,000. And it is understandable that a business would want to capitalize on this potential market. However, it is imperative that the businesses looking to build in Middletown adhere to the same rules and regulations that the current citizens were held to when we built our houses. This consistency creates a positive relationship between our current tax-paying citizens and our incoming citizens with our leaders at City Hall. On top of our concerns pertaining to the current building code regulations being followed, we also have concerns regarding the building group and their previous conduct at the site. They were given a specific date in 2002 to have trees removed to prevent the bat population from returning to the area. In order to meet the April 1 deadline, the company brought in help to remove the trees. The individual who brought down the trees did so with little concern for the properties in the immediate area. Many property owners have spoken at previous meetings." "About the trees that were knocked down on the properties and left there for quite some time, they also discussed the careless manner in which the properties were cleaned by the company. Some of them," in parentheses, Kelly Cushing of Mountain Avenue, "mentioned that the trees were left leaning against trees on her property, creating an unsafe situation for her family. Each time this group presents a new building proposal to the ZBI, they make an alteration which they know is not to code. For example, they've reduced the width of the road from 30 feet to 25 feet and currently 24 feet. From the meetings I have attended, they have been below the recommendation size. The turnabout should have been seen as a major issue, considering the safety hazard this could become if vehicles such as an ambulance or a fire truck could not navigate in a safe manner. Allowing businesses to manipulate the laws and regulations currently set forth by the city sets a bad precedent that our laws are subject to be altered when suitable. We are not asking for no houses to be built in our neighborhood. We are simply asking that they adhere to the same rules we all followed as we built houses." With 288 feet of road frontage they currently have, it allowed, it would have allowed them to build three homes at 75 feet, would take up 225 feet. The remaining 63 feet would not be sufficient for a fourth home, let alone six houses. These three houses would come with a sizable amount of land and not overcrowd our neighborhood, which would in turn maintain the quality of life that we have come to expect from living in this specific neighborhood. Speaking on behalf of the neighbors in my community, we have full faith that the ZBI and common council will serve their roles to continue to maintain the quality of life that we have worked very hard to maintain in the city of Middletown. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Respectfully signed, Jason Lichtenstein, educator and Realtor." Are there any other members of the public looking to speak on this topic? Okay, here in.
Mr. Chairman, you can either close the public hearing, or as Alderman Kleiner had suggested, that the public did bring forth some information, the applicant brought some information forth. You can allow the board the time to review it, hold the public hearing open, or close it. It would be the board's decision.
Okay. Like to open this up for discussion amongst the board members and survey their feelings. Would you like to continue this public hearing into next month, or would you like to close this public hearing this month?
Can I ask you for a clarification on something that was said before I decide what I want to do?
Okay.
I want to speak to you about the precedent being set for the lots that they are requesting. Mr. Fabricant mentioned that he thought we, as a group, could set a precedent, and then the next people coming in wouldn't have to go through what they have. But when the gentleman from, I'm sorry, I heard you called Pete, I didn't hear your last name. When he came up, you told him that it would be each case on its own. But wouldn't it indeed set a precedent if, if they changed the code to allow, or changed the variance to allow him to do the houses?
Would, if you're asking, would other applicants bring up the variance sought that this board decided on? Yes. But is it a precedent? No, because every situation is unique, and they would have to go through the factor test, and you would be able to make a decision based upon the factors. The public, the board is deciding first.
So another question for you, counsel. Do you need more time to review the paperwork that was presented today?
Yes, but that wouldn't impact the public hearing section. But the board was provided copies from both the public and from the applicant, and you may have further discussion with the public or with the applicant regarding the information that was provided.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
Yes.
Keeping the meeting open to the public would allow us to ask questions the next time after we review some of these new materials we've been offering.
If you had a specific question towards a public person that was here tonight, and you needed further clarification, yes.
In that case, I, I'm with keeping it open to the public for next month, and I can't see a reason why we wouldn't be able to close it to public and then take a vote on it if we have all the information we need.
What is your feelings?
I would, I would say to close the public hearing, because I think we've heard from everybody and have heard everything that, you know, that, that they've wanted, that they've wanted to present to the board.
I'm in a quandary, and that's my honest answer. I think that the community has, has given us a lot to consider, and they've been here for all of the questions and answers, and I think they've prevented a, presented a good case. I think that, I'm not sure which way to go with that. I don't want to, I don't, I would, I would side with, if I was leaning, I would side, stay open, if, if I had to make a vote that encompassed everything. I'm in a quandary, truly.
Okay.
My only comment to it is, part of the public has said that they'd like the public hearing closed so that we could put this to a finality, whether we voted for or against the project. Obviously, we can't keep this open forever. We got to eventually make a decision one way or another. If you feel that what the public has provided and given you time to review till next month so that, I believe even the applicant would like next month for a decision when one of the other board members is here, that's fine. But eventually, we do have to shut it down.
Based on what you just said, I will go with the shutting down, or keeping open, keeping open.
Closing the public hearing.
For next month, for next month, yes, so that we can review and, and, yes.
So my understanding is that we can, that closing the public hearing this evening does not prohibit us from asking questions of the applicant, but it would prohibit us from asking questions of the public during their presentations?
That's correct. But the public does have 30 days from the close of the public hearing to provide comment to the board.
So the public could submit emails or letters-
Correct.
-following this meeting, still making that 30-day rule?
That's correct.
And those items could be discussed during our next meeting?
Correct, amongst the board.
Amongst the board. All right. Also occurred to me that we have an even number of board members here tonight. So.
So you would have to have a 3-1 decision, or a 2-2 decision does not close it, it would leave it open.
Right. All right. So I'll go ahead and cast a motion to close the public hearing this evening, and in order to move that forward, we would need a second. Okay, so all in favor of closing the hearing this evening? Signify by.
Aye.
Aye. Keith?
Aye.
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 Aye. Myself, aye. So four in favor, zero against, and Mr. Woody was absent. So four in favor, zero against, and Mr. Woody was absent.
Public hearing is closed.
Okay. Now, another piece of business for the board is, we need to review and approve the minutes from last month's meeting.
Before we do that, why don't we now decide that we'll make a motion to adjourn for future consideration on the approval of the project or denial?
Okay. So I'd ask that we turn that into a motion for future consideration of the application that was presented to us on Orange Terrace this evening for future consideration. Counselor, does that meet your requirements?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd look for someone to make that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and a second by Ms. Cavalero. Roll call. Ms. Rodriguez, aye. Aye. Myself, aye. So four in favor, zero against.
So the motion is carried. It's put over for future consideration, being next month. Any change on it? Check the website, make sure it's up.
Counselor, can we move ahead with-
Yes, you can.
-approving last month's minutes? I'll look for a motion on that.
To approve?
Wendy, a second from Mary Ann. Roll call.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mary Ann. Myself, aye. Four in favor, zero against.
Minutes approved.
Minutes approved.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Wendy, Mary Ann, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Good evening.